Good evening. Thank you very much for coming out for our town hall. If I have not had a chance to come by and introduce myself, I'm Heath Morrison, very proud new superintendent of Montgomery ISD. And I am what I affectionately call my entry time, which is I get to come into the district and engage a lot of different individuals and ask questions about what is it that you love and cherish about this district and want us to keep strong? What are areas about our district that you'd love to see improved? Where do you see opportunities? And what is the best way that you know that we can best serve your children? And those are the type of questions I wish I was spending all of my time on. But that's not where we find ourselves. And so this town hall would usually be my asking those questions and hoping that I have an auditorium full of folks and getting great feedback to guide the future of our school district. But we are now facing unprecedented times. And not only are we dealing with this global pandemic and economic challenges, but we have a wildfire ravaging California. We have two hurricanes barreling down on our great state of Texas. And so if you have not heard already or seen the update from our school district, we have decided that for tomorrow, we are going fully remote. And so our employees will work from home and our teachers will teach from home. We have already welcomed back to our campuses our pre-K, kindergarten, special education students who are served by alternate curriculum, our faculty students and children, as well as students who have not been able to enjoy remote instruction because of connectivity devices. So all of those students will be served remotely on Wednesday. And then Thursday, much like many of the other Montgomery County school districts, we will be closed. And we will make a decision based off of whatever happens with the Hurricane Laura on Thursday, and we'll strive to get that information out to you as quickly as possible. But our focus tonight is around how we are addressing COVID-19 and our plans to continue our phased opening. And let me address one of the questions because we have the town hall scheduled here for this evening. We have another one scheduled for tomorrow. And unfortunately, we're going to have to cancel that because of the weather issues. But we asked for a lot of people if they would not be able to make either town hall, would they be interested in sending questions? And so we did get a number of questions. One of the more frequently asked questions, are we continuing with our plan to offer parents the opportunity to bring students safely back to school on September 8th? So let me start off with that, and the answer is yes. It has always been our desire to have our students and families who choose to be taught in person to have that opportunity. Our board has been very clear, and I know we have one of our board members here this evening, Adam Simmons, our board vice president. I don't see any others right now, so sometimes I get myself in trouble when I introduce one, but I'm scanning and I don't. So thank you, Adam, for being here. But the board has been very clear of their desire for us to continue our trajectory of giving parents that opportunity and option. And so unless something were to dramatically change or the governor were to give us other orders, it is our intention to continue with our phased opening, which will welcome back next week our sixth and ninth graders to our campuses. And then on September the 8th, for all families who choose to do so, to have your students come back to one of our 10 wonderful campuses. So the goal tonight is to answer as many questions as we can, to share with you some of the planning. And so as you can see, a lot of people on the stage, and because it takes a village, right? But we're going to ask to have several of our senior leaders speak to you about what we're doing to plan for a great academic program, whether you do choose to have your student return on September the 8th for in-person traditional instruction, or if you choose to have your child continue with remote. We want the standard to be excellent, and we will strive to do everything we can to have that happen. So we're asked several of our leaders to share our plans and make those options for you the best that they possibly can be. Then we will talk about, because no matter if we continue with remote options for those parents who choose that for their children, or even returning our students back to our 10 campuses, there's still a technology infrastructure that's important on either of those choices. So we'll give you some updates on that. And then it's not only about the rich academic opportunities we want to afford your children, but one of our core commitments is always, 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 how do we keep your students and our valued employees safe? And so we want to give you some updates in that regard. And then, you know, we do have to prepare for if, and probably more likely, when there are confirmed cases of COVID, either from students or employees on campus, how will we notify you as parents in our community quickly and efficiently? So we're going to touch base on all those topics, but leave plenty of time for questions. And then we will periodically, if we can, weave in some of those questions that were asked, that we got from our community that were not able to be here this evening. So with no further ado, I want to focus on the academic program and the choices that you have available and what we've done to try to make those choices great Bible options for you and your family. And so I'd like to ask Wendy Graves, our assistant superintendent of elementary instruction, Dwayne McFadden, our assistant superintendent of secondary instruction, and Meredith Berg, our director of special education, to come up and share some of those things with you at this point.
All right. For elementary, Ed, as we started the school year remotely, we had one goal in mind, and that was to make sure that we improved upon what we offered last spring. The ways that we felt like we could improve is to come up with a unified platform, one platform for the parent to log into that offered the parent the opportunity to work from a dashboard rather than different logins, multiple logins that they had to use. So the elementary adopted CSO as our platform for its remote learning. So as our teachers returned to us knowing that we would be moving to remote, we spent a great deal of time training our teachers on CSO and how to use CSO. We've also pushed out many videos, self-help videos and trainings to our parents on how to use CSO as well. So we feel like it's going well. We do know and we are aware that there are some kinks and some things that we need to work out, but we're able to do that as they come to us. We started the school year on bringing back our pre-K and K students. And this was a great opportunity to us for many reasons. These students have not ever been in the school environment, a school district environment. They may have been in daycare or private care, but there's a lot of different practices and routines that we offer them during the day. So it gives us the time to train those pre-K and K kiddos on the school routine. It also gives us time to share with them how important it is to, you know, to wash our hands, you know, the social distancing. We can teach some of those things. We can also monitor how they're walking in the hall so that we can make sure we're really prepared so when a number of students come back, we have some procedures in place to help with that. It has been very successful. We brought them back. We did a small meet the teacher, a very organized meet the teacher with the parents, realizing that it was the first time that their kids were in our school. We wanted to offer that opportunity to that group of parents. So we scheduled one-on-one meet the teacher opportunity, and it was great. Our kiddos have started and things are going really well. We do recognize that with remote learning, there's still challenges for us to work out. We're working on that daily because we want this to be a great opportunity for you and your children. So we will continue to work on the remote learning each and every day. So elementary.
Good evening. I'm Dwayne McFadden. I'm the assistant superintendent of secondary education. I want to talk a little bit about what we've done differently from the spring as far as virtual or remote learning goes. We tried to make it better than it was this spring. You know, we had one day and then we were out of school and we seemed to never come back, but we've had some months to plan now. And so we eliminated the eight-period day schedule and we've moved everyone, virtual and in-person learning will be on an eight-period block schedule, which gives kids four classes a day to focus on, which is really a plan that we had looked a lot at going back to. We had been on a block schedule a long time ago and we had been talking about going back to a block schedule. So it gave us the opportunity to pull the trigger on that. So kids have four classes. We unified the platform in the Google Classroom, and we have a single sign-on ClassLink, which we hope is making it easier and better. And we're loading more resources into that every day so that like textbooks that have online versions to them, they'll single sign in as well. So once kids get into ClassLink, they'll be able to go to all the resources they need. Having teachers work from campus is phenomenal. It makes all the difference. A work environment makes a lot of difference to teachers. We're learning every day and we're trying to make it better. Right now, we're somewhere between 85% to 90% of our kids say they're coming back. And I hope I'm not, I mean, that's just an estimate, but that's what our survey's looking like, and we're happy for that. We think, you know, in-person, that's what we're designed to do, is teach kids in-person. And so we're working as best we can. I know one big question on virtual environment with parents that we saw come in on questions and I feel that phone calls, is how are we going to make that experience the same for virtual as we are in-person as far as major exams? And so we are experimenting, or we're exploring a lot of options on that. One of those options is that we would have proctoring periods where we ask our remote learners to come to school at a certain time period, and we can test them with a proctor in an auditorium like this where they're socially distanced. We're looking at browser lockdown software that a lot of AP testing used in the spring where they can't go to different areas, but in conjunction with the lockdown browsers, we would also have that be a live Zoom so that we have someone monitoring whether kids are looking off camera or using resources that are off camera. You know, we're not predispositioned to believe that students cheat, but we have to not be blind to the fact that that happens. There's lots of pressure and there's lots of things that go on. And so we're very aware of that and we're working to try to find a solution to it. Obviously, the solution is if we have them all here, then we don't have to worry about remote instruction, but that's not the game we're given. And so we're working within the parameters that we have. In our phased-in opening in secondary, we really stayed with just our special groups, our non-internet families and our special education students that are on an alternate curriculum. And so that our teachers could get a really good handle on the virtual environment because if kids get sick or kids have to be out of school, that same teacher is going to flip them to remote. And so they'll have the same teacher, the same schedule if they're at home or whether they're in person so that if they do have to miss for a certain number of days, they'll be able to go to remote and then flip right back into their schedule when they're able to come back to school, which is going to help with the continuity for each kid in the class that they're in. They don't have to switch teachers. They don't have to go to a different schedule. And so we think that will help. Next week, I believe it's next week, we're bringing sixth graders and ninth graders back. We chose those grades on purpose. They're new to the buildings. They'll be new to the high school buildings. They'll be new to the middle school buildings. And it gives us an opportunity to do a lot of things with them, to teach them the traditions of the building. You know, there's a lot of traditions that go into being a junior high school or a high school. Well, also, it's the first time in the building, so they'll get to learn the building without 800 other students in there with them. And so that gives us some opportunities to practice our procedures, our lunchroom procedures, which are vastly different than they have been in the past. And so it gives us some opportunities to do that with a smaller group for a week. And then on September 8th, we're open to welcome everybody back and have that process go as smoothly. We are also doing, the block schedule has fewer transitions, so we have fewer times where they have to pass in the hall. Instead of seven transitions, we have three. All students are going to wear a mask, and that is simply following the guidelines of TEA. And when I say guidelines, they're really mandates from TEA because that's our governing body. And as a state organization, we're required to follow all of the procedures that are put forth by that body. Staggered arrival patterns, dismissal, arrival and class transitions will release students at different times to keep the hallways as clear as possible. I can't tell you kids are going to be six feet apart from each other at all times. They're not. That's why it's important for them to wear a mask because the current close contact rule is if both people are wearing a mask and you're within six feet of each other, you're not technically in close contact. It's for 15 minutes or longer without one of the people wearing a mask. And so that's how we're social tracing, and social tracing close contact with students. Obviously, lunch will be another area where kids are without a mask, and so that's where we're going to have not assigned seats, but we'll have a way to figure out where all kids were sitting on any given day in the cafeteria. So that's some of the procedures we're doing differently in secondary. And again, our goal is to have 100% of our kids back on campus as soon as possible. Thank you.
Hello. Speaking to special education services in 504, including dyslexia, just wanted to touch on and reiterate, I see several of our parents out here. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your curiosity and your investment in our kids and our plan and what we're trying to do for all students. So when it comes to special education, we're working very hard to work through our assessments that were requested maybe in the spring and had not had the chance to do any face-to-face pieces of those, same for those students that are being tested under dyslexia. We're working through those lists in the order of consent when that was obtained to make sure that we're meeting the needs of students, that student services aren't delayed just because of COVID as much as we can avoid that. That is our goal. And we were able to apply for some additional grant money that allows us to bring in additional assessment folks to help us work through those lists. Highly qualified staff, a lot of them former employees of the ISD who may have retired, but they have great assessment background and knowledge. We've tapped into that to make sure that we're again meeting those timelines and working through the evaluations. I want to thank our parents who are making the extra effort to bring your student to campus to receive their related services, whether that be speech, OT, PT, orientation and mobility. A lot of those services are best met through face-to-face instruction, sometimes one-on-one. And there are things that we can try to do to supplement some of that virtually, but really a lot of that is absolutely best done face-to-face. I know that's an additional layer of support on your part as the parent to bring the student to campus to access those services. We appreciate your support in doing that, and we're glad that we are able to participate with you and see that growth continue for our students. We will continue to work as our sixth and ninth graders join us next week, and we have our first time with, you know, a bigger group of students on the junior high and high school campuses. Again, that's going to help us look at those pieces of the, are we keeping it safe? How are transitions going? Oh, we weren't really sure about that hallway, but it looks like we need to address this area because we have a big group of students that are accessing that during different times, not just those in special ed or 504, but all of our students. Making sure that everyone has access to their classes that we're working through in the event we do have a situation where maybe there is a request or something that comes of I can't wear a mask, or we've got different things for that. There's some procedures we're putting in place because again, our governor said that we are to all wear masks and encourage all ages to be wearing masks. It protects the student, it protects their peers, it protects the staff so that ultimately we can all stay in school. So just working through all of those things that could come up. Again, thank you for working with us through this, trying to schedule those individualized services. It's very important that we're able to work with each of our students, and we really couldn't do that without your support. So we want to continue that through this next week. Again, we're very hopeful for the 8th that we can all be back face-to-face and work with our kiddos, with their staff and with all of their curriculum items that they access.
So one of the things throughout the evening, and you're here to say constantly, is we are striving, we are a learning organization, so how do we continue to learn and to grow and improve? One of the things, reaching out to many folks in the community, one of those named one finalists, was challenges that our parents had around different platforms that our schools were using. Remember, spring came and 15,000 school districts across the country were all scrambling for how they were going to deliver remote instruction. And so I'm super proud of this team and our campus principals because we made the decision for all of our elementary to use a platform called CSO and our secondary campuses to use Google Classroom. That also allowed us to invest the beginning of the year where usually there's lots of different trainings. We gave that time to our campus principals to fully invest in the needs of our teachers to either get more acquainted with those platforms or to learn other skills that will help them on their journey to not only be the very best teacher that they could be but in this new world, to be the best remote teacher that they can be. And that technology platform is incredibly important. I'd now like to ask our, she has so many hats, I have to remember which one I'm asking her to wear, but she wears many hats around our student services and our academic and technology program, Dr. Amy Busby.
Thank you. So I do want to mention, just follow up with the ClassLink that you talked about. We did start that process. We heard loud and clear in the spring that that was a frustration, that many different places to go to, and then the many different usernames and passwords that we had to remember and try to communicate. So we did start back in June, working on getting that platform in place. And we did have it ready to roll at the beginning of the year, but as I had, if you had seen the last board meeting, I use that analogy, it's like having a new car. And there's a lot of bells and whistles that come with the new car that you're still trying to figure out what all those pieces do. So we are still in the growing and learning phase of that platform. We have started with the basics, where we've allowed it to be a login for our basic programs of our Office 365, our Google platform and our CSO platform. As Mr. McFadden mentioned, as the year goes on, we will be adding additional curriculum programs and other technology tools that the teachers use to instruct their students. You will start to see additional apps pop up in that ClassLink platform. So as we grow it, you're going to see more and more of those resources that you can go to that one place and have that one place to log in and get to the rest of the resources. So we're really excited about that being a great tool as we move forward. I wanted to also direct you to our district website. If you have not seen it yet, you'll notice on the homepage, on the left-hand side, there is an area where it says Montgomery Moving Forward 2020, and this is our reopening plan. So the things that you have heard them talk about today and the things that you'll hear the rest of the group talk about as well, that information will be housed here, and most of it is already housed there. So you can use that as a resource when you have questions. It will talk about traditional in-person as well as remote learning. So whichever option you chose for your child, here is the place where you can go to and say, what are we doing for remote learning? Or what are we doing for that traditional in-person? What are we doing different? So this is a great place to look for that. And then of course, there's always a lot of the health questions and the safety questions, and that information is also housed here for you to go and look at and review. Other things that you can find on this website, you'll notice on the left-hand side, there is an option for parent training resources, and I'll click on that in just a moment and show you that. And then the FAQs. So as questions have come in, we have tried to consolidate those questions and put those questions and answers on here as well. So another great place for you to go with those most common questions that we're getting, and we'll do our best to update that after our town hall meetings as well. Let me click on that parent training resource. So as we talked about that new platform and new bells and whistles, and it is a learning curve for our users, but also it's new for our students and for our parents. So we're trying to put some resources on this site. For example, this video on how to log in, and it'll just take you through the steps of how to get there. I'm sure most of you, I'm hoping, have had a successful login by now, but just in case anybody's new, there's some information. And there is also some troubleshooting information on here because no matter what, in a perfect world, you roll out a new program, there's always technology, there's always glitches. Things happen, something happens with the password, we get ourselves logged out, something maybe with that browser storing an old password and it can't get updated. There's always those little things. So we know that there's some troubleshooting steps that this will help walk you through some of those things. We do ask for you to reach out to your teachers if you need additional support because they have the answers to a lot of questions. If it's not a question that they can answer, then they can reach out to our technology department to get additional assistance and get you reconnected as soon as possible. We are continuing to add resources under Google Classroom if your student is using that. This link brings them to, it says a cheat sheet, so basically it just kind of gives them an overview of what all the different functions, what they do and how to use them. And we'll continue to add videos as the year goes on as well. And then CSO, as you mentioned, here's some really good login instructions for CSO and how to do that through ClassLink and through also, if you're using the app, you can log in directly through the app if you're using a tablet or phone for CSO. And then this Wakelet, that brings you to an additional resource. We have some technology integration mentors on our campus. One of our lead, Amy Store, she put a lot of the resources together so that parents have a place with just a ton of different how-to videos and tips and different things to kind of help support our parents and our students as they're learning those platforms. As Ms. Graves mentioned, we have been training our teachers. Again, some of these teachers have used these platforms and some of our teachers, this is new for them. So we have done some initial trainings, but we're going to also continue to support our teachers throughout the year. We're doing some after-school trainings and even some virtual trainings with our teachers too. So I think you said a growth district, learning district, we're going to continue to be that throughout the year so that we can continue to keep making these resources better and better and better as the year goes on. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we talked about the number of students that are choosing to come back. We did send out a survey last week and today was the final date for that survey to be turned in. So we're a little over 6,000 responses on that, so I'm hoping that maybe tonight people are sitting in front of the TV watching, you know, the hurricane move in and they're like, oh, I can do my form while I'm sitting here watching this, because we have a few more that we need to get in. So far, our responses have been about 85% that would like to come back in person. So as I mentioned, we're definitely going to be prepared for those 85%. And then that other 15%, we're going to make sure we keep fine-tuning these tools so they continue to get a really good remote learning.
As I said, there are 15,000 school districts across the United States all dealing with these similar challenges. And I'm sure there are some school districts that will come in front of their community and say, we've got it all figured out. We have all the answers and don't worry about it. That's not going to be this school district. We are learning, we're growing, we're getting better each and every day as questions come in, as parents, community members have suggestions. We grow, we learn, we consider. We have a COVID rapid response team that meets every day. And as there are new federal guidelines, state guidelines, health guidelines, our teachers are making suggestions, our principals are having requests. Every day, we're considering how to get to a yes that ensures the very best academic programming for every student, that we have the honor and privilege of serving. And always to keep our primary responsibility of keeping our students and staff safe at the forefront of every decision we're making. Everything about K-12 education, we're having to rethink, everything. And that's from how the little ones do kindergarten rotations, how elementary does PE and playground, how we get students in and out of class transitions at the secondary school. Everything has to be rethought and always with safety at the top of mind for all of our decisions. Going to ask now our chief operating officer, Bobby Morris, to come share with you a lot of the decisions we've already made and where you can find what we're trying to do to keep your students and our staff safe in Montgomery ISD on the website.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. As you've heard tonight, number one is student safety, student staff safety. And you've also heard the word TEA, the letters TEA, the Texas Education Agency. Schools across the state of Texas are taking their guidance on all of this COVID situation from the Texas Education Agency or TEA. We have, you've heard tonight that mask, you've heard that a few times, and many of you out here look good in your mask. Appreciate that. The state of Texas has provided masks, both youth and adult-sized masks. They've also provided hand sanitation. They've provided gloves for us. They've provided thermometers for us. They've also provided face shields. But the state of Texas couldn't provide all we needed, so we have several partners within our community that have donated supplies to us, personal protective equipment to us. I'm going to read them off and say thank you to them. The city of Montgomery has got us in contact with Montgomery County, and Montgomery County donated masks and hand sanitizers. Homeland Security, masks and gloves. The HCA Houston Healthcare of Conroe, masks. And then we've got another donation today, Hempel USA donated mask. Hempel USA donated masks for us today. We want to say thank you to the partners. And if any of you have a contact for us that we could get more donations, we would love to hear from you. One thing that is going to be a little different this year is transportation. And I think, if we can go to transportation on the website, we talk about the number of kids on a bus. Texas Education Agency has not limited the number of students we can get on a bus. So we are taking other precautions to make sure that we keep students and staff safe. So the things we will do is, number one, we want to encourage each and every family, if possible, to bring your own child to school. If you can bring your child to school and go through the car rider line, then that would be a good thing, so that we can decrease the number of students that may need to ride the bus. Of course, those car rider lines are going to get a little longer, so we might need a little more patience with the car rider lines. But we're going to work through this together. So we would encourage, if you can, to bring your own child to school, furnish your own transportation for your child. But on our buses, each bus will have hand sanitation, and we will encourage kids as they get on and get off to use the hand sanitation. We will also require students 10 and up to wear masks. And we strongly encourage other students that are nine and below to wear their masks, especially while they're on the bus. We're encouraging it in all of our facilities, but strongly encourage it on the bus. Our bus drivers will wear face shields, our kids will, as I said, will wear masks. We will load from, the first student on the bus will get on and go to the very back of the bus. And then, when we unload, the students in the front of the bus will unload from the front. So no student has to walk past another student. We will put a little fresh air into our buses. We will crack the windows a little bit to get some fresh air into the buses. And as it gets cooler, we'll crack those windows a little more. Our drivers have been trained on disinfecting their buses. And after each load, our drivers will wipe down highly-used areas. And then, at the end of the day, all of our buses will be sanitized with what we call a victory sprayer. It's kind of a backpack-looking, there's a handheld and a backpack, but they will be disinfected with the victory sprayers. Let's see. I think that's it. Campus cleaning. Can I get to campus cleaning there? Yeah, campus cleaning. There are several things we're going to do with campus cleaning. Frequent cleaning and disinfectant will be throughout the day. Nightly deep cleaning will happen. Each classroom and each restroom will be sanitized daily. Disinfectant has been supplied to each classroom, so that if a teacher has an area that they believe they need to wipe down while a class change, or while kids are out at specials, and they need to, they think they need to wipe down an area, then they have the supplies to do that. We also have provided hand sanitizer in every classroom. And I think that's pretty much it on the campus cleaning. Now, I want to ask Lena Nusia Bauer, who is our Director of Child Nutrition, to come up and tell you a little about what we're doing for child nutrition. Right now, Lena and her group are feeding students that are in school. She's feeding students that are remote learners, that come by and do a grab-and-go. So her employees have been very, very busy, and they're doing a great job. And Lena, I want to thank you and your employees for the job you are doing for us. We're proud of you and your department.
First of all, thank you all for coming. Welcome. We have, our department already follows a great deal of health guidelines from the Montgomery County Health Department. So we are already used to washing hands, wearing gloves, and making sure that we are keeping our students and staff safe every day. But we bumped it up a little bit more, so we can increase the sanitation that we're doing in our kitchens and in our serving lines. One of the things that we started doing was that we were going to ask for all of our vendors to let us know their safety protocols, so that when we are bringing in food, and when we are bringing in other people from outside, bringing it into the school, we wanted to make sure that they are following the same guidelines as what we are following. So as of right now, we have all of our vendors, and we're very proud, as they've been coming in for these last couple of weeks, that everyone has been on top of their game. Everyone is required to wear a mask or a shield in the kitchen. And of course, anyone that's coming through the back door, we've already posted signage that's saying you must enter with a mask on. We feel like that that is a safe way to keep everyone in the kitchen. Several times a day, we have started sanitizing doors and handles, anything that is around our kitchen, that we just make a point that we've added it to our cleaning duties. So we are continuing to do that. We're also have put plastic shields where the cashiers were stationed at the end of the serving line. So there's a plastic shield between the server, I mean, between the cashier and for the student. So it is for the protection of both of them. We have removed all of our cutlery dispensers, and we are using individually-wrapped cutlery for the students to have in the serving lines. We're also sanitizing the serving lines in between each lunch, and we're using a disposable towel. We're not using reusable towels. So as we spray with the sanitizer on the towel, it is being thrown away, and we're not using it repeatedly throughout the day. On the serving lines, we normally have fresh fruits and vegetables that are displayed, and it has a beautiful color of all of those foods. And of course, we're going to have to put lids on all of them now, or plastic wraps. So our challenge is, is letting kids know what is inside that closed container. So we want to make sure that they are eating everything that we have to offer. And as you know, we eat with our eyes. So that'll be a little bit of a challenge for us. We also are not going to allow the students to use the keypad, whereas they would put in their ID number at the end of the serving line. We are either going to be using barcodes, or they will tell the cashier their name or their ID number, so that way we do not have repeated use of a student using the keypad. So every day, we are going to be looking at ways of what we can do to serve your children and to make sure that we are safe, and do things better every day if we can, because our goal is to make sure that you guys are safe.
Thank you, Lena. I'd love to have her be able to share all of the things, and that's just a fraction of the many, many things that they're doing proactively, different to serve your children nutritious meals safely. And everyone has experienced going through a cafeteria line, but you haven't experienced it the way that we're having to structure it now in schools. I almost hate every day to look at my email when I get up, because for every 10 emails I get, there's at least eight that is from a vendor saying, we have this latest and greatest PPE that's going to keep your students and staff safe. And you start to read it and look at it and worry, well, what if I don't get this for my staff? What if I don't do this for our students? And I reached out, and we actually had a great parent who is a leader in the health department here in Montgomery County, address our COVID Rapid Response Team. And it was very clear that, just like we're experiencing this in the school district and the hospital system, they've had to do this as well, which is to really focus on the things that really have the most thematic and alignment around keeping people safe. And that is the wearing of a face covering, be it a shield or mask, and sometimes in a combination of both, whether it is social distancing, practicing the six feet, and most especially, washing your hands frequently. And if there's one thing I would ask all of you as parents, if you ask, what can I do to help keep our schools safe, please encourage your students as many times as they think they're washing their hands during the course of the school day or home, ask them to do it even more. I understand the face masks are somewhat at issue. And I want to address this because a lot of folks sent online questions. And there were many that said, don't you, Montgomery ISD, see all the research that says that wearing the mask has to be mandatory for every single student all the time? Or the questions said, Montgomery ISD, don't you see all the research that says that not only are they not helpful, but they might be harmful? And there is so much research. And what we have to do as a school district is have a single source of truth. And that single source of truth is that entity which can give us direction, and that's TEA. And so we will follow TEA's guidelines, and TEA is following the governor's order. And the governor's order is, everybody in the state of Texas who is under the age of 10, unless there is underlying health conditions, has to wear masks in public places such as schools. We will encourage our little ones under the age of 10, but we will require for adults and students over the age of 10. I've had a number of conversations with parents, and they're trying to get to where we are if they are not supportive of the mask. And the one area that I've had some success trying to get them to understand our point of view on this, is to take whatever is the feeling about the mask out of the reality of, we all have a vested interest, we want to reopen our schools. If you choose to send your students to us on September the 8th, we want to not only assure you that we're going to do everything we can to keep them safe, but also to not have to close schools. And our best option to not have to close a school, or a grade, or a classroom, or in fact, the entire district, will be if, in the process of social distancing and contact tracing, we can demonstrate that although a student might have been close to a faculty member who tested positive, or close to another student who tested positive, the wearing of a mask, even if they weren't always six-foot distance, will help us keep classrooms open, schools open, our district open. So I ask for your support, because it is our goal, as I know it's your desire, for us to keep our schools not to reopen on September 8th, then have to close them quickly. Communicating all this is incredibly challenging. Six months ago, most people across the country didn't know what synchronous and asynchronous instruction was. No one really understood a thing called contact tracing. And it's hardly a day goes by where our colleagues aren't talking about some aspect of what is different. And how we communicate that to you is very important. I want to ask Dr. Sonia Lopez, our Chief HR and Communications Superintendent, to come up and tell you some of how we intend to communicate when, unfortunately, if we experience a positive test on one of our campuses.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. And thank all of you for being here tonight. When we said that we were going to have a town hall, I think the first thing that came out for many of us, when we don't get out of our house as much, is are we going to do this online? Are we going to broadcast this online? Can we watch it remotely from home? Well, you know, we've changed a lot of the things that we do in communications, and that's one of the things that we do now most often, is we make sure that we record all of our events, and that we post them online for you to see. I hope you've enjoyed the board meetings, and that you're learning a lot more about the district through those postings. We're doing that with tonight's presentation. So we also wanted to make sure to take those questions from the people at home before tonight. So in one day, we got over 100 wonderful questions. And I want you to know, if you're watching at home online tonight, that we plan on answering those, grouping those, answering those, and posting those where you saw our COVID response link where Amy showed earlier. We're going to show those answers for all of those questions next week. So please know if you're online, you're going to get those questions answered. But Dr. Morrison said that I was here to speak tonight on, how are you going to be notified if we get an identified positive case? And so it's really pretty simple. What I want you to know is, you're going to know immediately. As soon as we know that there is a positive case that's been identified, we are going to let our parents know of the students that were in close contact with that identified case through a letter. You think, so a letter? That's going to take a long time to get to us. But all of you know today, you got immediate notification through our parent notification system called School Messenger, that we were going to be remote learning tomorrow and closing our schools on Thursday. So if you did not get a message from School Messenger tonight, then I encourage you to quickly get with your campus administrator and your registrar, so that we have your information correct, and you receive those district emails and those campus emails, because that's a way that we can get to you immediately through an email, through a phone call, or through a text message, through that School Messenger parent notification program. So we're going to move into action in two ways. The first letter that will be sent home will be to those parents of students who were in close, possible close contact with that person, that staff member, or that other student with COVID-19. That's the first letter. After we've notified all of those parents, we will notify the entire school that there's been a positive identified campus. But if you receive the second letter, it's very clear and bold that if your child had been identified as one of the students in close contact, then you wouldn't be receiving that letter. So if you receive the second letter, it'll be clear that it wasn't your student who had, who's in positive, I'm sorry, possible close contact. So just know right now, tonight, we have that process developed, we are ready to move into action. I hope that's evident tonight of all of our team here in the COVID Rapid Response Team, that we are very transparent, that we are communicating as much as we know every day. And check those School Messenger accounts, and let's make sure that you're getting that communication from us on a daily basis whenever it comes out. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. When you think about what we know about school and what is so different, no one in any school district, six to seven months ago, had been trained in a concept called close contact. Now, we have to be the folks that actually do the tracing, try to determine who was close contact, how do we quickly get that information out. It's a different world, and we are experiencing it, as you are, in every aspect of life. And again, we will strive for excellence. And I say all the time, we will not be perfect, but our standard will be excellence. There are three words, I hope, if you remember nothing else from tonight, as we start to address questions, is, you know, please silently repeat after me, subject to change. I'm going to say it again, because we have to live it every day. Subject to change. We've shared a lot of information with you. There's a lot of information on our website. We put a lot of thought into it. This team meets for hours some days, trying to think through all of the things we need to do to provide quality instruction and to keep your students and staff safe. But then, there is an edict from TEA, something changes at the federal level, CDC makes a ruling, and all of a sudden, we're back into having to update everything, what needs to change, how do we give guidance to our principals. And literally, we were doing a presentation to our board several weeks ago, and we have a weekly call with Commissioner of Education, Mike Morath, here in Texas. And as he was going through specialty areas of safety, literally, he was presenting things that we have to do as a school district. And as they were presenting, this staff was changing portions of the presentation to the board that was going to be an hour and a half coming up. So, subject to change. You may say, hey, two weeks ago, I read this. I attended that town hall at Lake Creek. I heard my principal say. And hopefully, those things that you heard were true at the time. But as we get new direction, as we get better guidance, or in some cases, direction, directives, these things will have to change. And we will strive to make those known to you as quickly as we can. What we want to do now is offer the opportunity for questions. We have two microphones at the top of the middle portion of the auditorium. You might say, I've got a pretty loud voice. I don't need the microphone. But I would ask if you wouldn't mind using it, because these are recorded, and the question you're asking may be the question that someone else who could not be here this evening might need to hear as well. So we'd love to be able to have those questions heard, as well as the responses. We have folks here representing food, child nutrition, our nurses, benefits, finance, special education, elementary and secondary education, operations, buses, communications, and technology, and child services. So we hope we've got the right folks, athletics as well. So please let us know what your questions are. The microphones are right back in, so right where that young lady is going, right there, is where we would ask you to go.
I just want to ask, why are other states, were they able to open their school doors day one for all students? And why are other states allowing students not to wear masks? Why? What's the difference here?
Well, there, as we know, there are 50 states representing 15,000 school districts, and every state chooses to handle this in different ways.
Right, but if the science is conclusive, why have other people come to other conclusions?
Well, I don't know. I've heard that the science is conclusive. I think every state has to make a decision about the science that they choose to make rules. rules, regulations, and guidance. I will share with you a state that is pretty close to where I've been living recently, the state of Georgia. And I don't say this to say, wow, look at Texas, or look at our district, but Georgia opened up fairly aggressively. They did not require masks. There was, we all saw that picture of a hallway in a high school, students crowded together, not wearing masks, breakouts of COVID amongst students and staff, school shuts down. So again, every state has to make decisions, every state has to be accountable, every state gives directions, every school district has to take those directions and be accountable. And so we have taken the accountability and the regulations, rules given to us by TEA and the governor, and we've come up with our own reopening, which we feel is appropriate. We took a little bit different tact than some of our other Montgomery County neighbors, where we did have a phase opening and brought back our students in phases. So that was maybe a little bit more aggressive than some of our neighbors, but what it's given us the ability to do is to see some of those plans that we put into place and the principals put on their campuses, and be able to then see how they work when you actually introduce students to them. And then we can change, pivot, do everything we can to build our quality instruction and to keep students and staff safe.
Well, I appreciate the arguments you guys have made, and I appreciate what you've done, but I just want you to know that I really disagree with the mask policy. I don't think students should be wearing masks. And I also think that you should have opened doors day one. I don't think there's a reason for that. If you're open for the flu, you should be open for this.
And I appreciate that truly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I was wondering about who are the members of the COVID Rapid Response Team?
We have our Chief Operating Officer, we have our Director of Elementary Instruction, we have our Director of Special Education Services, we have our Director of Finance, we have our Director of Human Resources and Communications, we have our Director of Transportation, we have our Director of Child Food Nutrition, we have our Director of Nurses, we have our Director of Employee Benefits and Services, we have our, Amy wears so many hats, but mostly around student services and instructional technology. And then we have our Director of Secondary Instruction, and then we have our Director of Athletics. And I get to serve on it too.
Thank you. With all respect to the lady that just spoke, so that the masks are required.
Yes, sir.
Which I agree with. And if a student is not wearing a mask, then what?
And Dwayne, I'm going to ask you to come up here too, because we've been spending a lot of time on this. So again, in the state of Texas, the, I want to say it's an easy answer, there's nothing easy about this, but the answer is, the law says we must wear a mask. And in a public school district, we're going to follow the law. And so the law is very clear. For adults in the building and for students over the age of 10, students have to wear masks. And so we are communicating that, we're going to over-communicate it. And no matter how people fall on the viability of masks, the science behind the masks, it's the law. And it allows us, in the case of a positive test, be it a student or staff member, to be able to say, yes, I was close to Bobby, but because I was wearing my mask, he was wearing his mask, then, you know, we don't have to shut down an entire classroom, school, or the district. For students under 10, the law is that they don't have to wear a mask. We're trying to encourage them to do that. And, you know, we're going to see how that goes. But the mask shield, hand washing, and social distancing of six foot, those are our best ways to return students and staff safely and to keep our schools open. What I would like to ask is Mr. McFadden to share a little bit about the guidance that we're giving to our principals about mask enforcement.
Basically, we're going to treat it as a dress code violation. You know, if you come in inappropriately dressed, we don't allow you to attend classes for the day, and your parents will be contacted. If it's simply a student forgets, or it slips off, or they, it comes down, we've talked a lot with our principals and assistant principals about how we're going to handle that, and we're really, we don't want this to evolve into cell phones. You know, when we tried to deny cellphone use, it was a nightmare. We would have, you know, a million violations of cell phones. So really, we're going to ask kids to cooperate with us so our schools can stay open, we're going to contact parents when maybe we're having some additional problems, but we're really trying to keep it out of the discipline areas so much, and just try to get kids to work with us. And, you know, if it comes down to it, it becomes an insubordination issue, and then it's not really a dress code violation at that point, it's not following a general rule of the school, and we'll have to deal with it as such.
Thank you. One more question. I understand tonight is the deadline to choose between in-person or online. And then what I understood is that if you choose online at this point, then you're stuck with it for the semester, is that correct? Is that also in the to be, what did you say, to be subject to change category?
Yes, sir. Our survey went out last week. The due date is today. I cannot encourage you enough, if you have not done that already, please do that. If you have conversations with your neighbors, and they say, hey, what happened at the town hall, if you could please encourage them to do that. The survey is incredibly important. The primary reason is, we want to know how best to serve your student. You might say, well, I don't even know what my child's bus route is yet. Well, quite frankly, we don't either, because we don't know how many students are going to choose in-person instruction. And then is there a difference between one school that might be 95% in-person, and another school that's at 80%? And then as you heard Mr. Morrison, we can then, you know, switch buses around to keep the number of students low on a bus. So it's how we're going to get your students safely to school. It's how we're going to program for construction, balanced classes. We're going to have to really grapple with how many students are going to still continue with remote instruction, and what's the best way to do that? If it was 75%, and I've said this example before, but think of a elementary school with four classroom teachers of third grade, and let's say they each have, you know, around 25 students. If 75% of the parents said we're going to choose in-person instruction, then it would be very easy to schedule, because three of the classes could be taught in-person, and one teacher could be remote, and that would work out really easily. At 85% or 90% differentiated amongst the different campuses, that becomes more challenging. Who's going to do the in-person instruction? Who's going to do the remote instruction? If we need every teacher to be doing in-person instruction, how do we adequately and excellently prepare for the remote instruction? We've got lots of different ideas going around, and it's going to take a system response. But that survey, the sooner we get it, the sooner we can start programming. I'll tell you one site I always hate as a school principal and superintendent, on the first day of school, when you walk into a school and you see a room full of students registering. And I'm always like, wow, I should have gotten an ice cream truck during the summer and gotten that ice cream, because most of those folks have been living in their home for a while, but they wait till the last minute. And the challenge of that is, we want to be ready day one. We want your child, you know, receiving their instructions, we want it to be great, we want you to know who your teacher is. And so that survey will help us program well, either in-person or remote, the best way that we can. We want, there are regulations and guidelines that have been suggested around what happens, how much flexibility will a parent have to change their mind? And we want to try to work with our parents, and not just quote the guideline all the time. And so if a parent were to want to reconsider and bring their student back after the deadline, we want to try to work and see if we can accommodate that, or vice versa, if they feel like they need to choose remote, we want to be able to work with them as well. But knowing at least from day one, how we're going to approach September 8th will be really, really important for us to do it very, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sir. Good evening. Just a real quick question regarding going back to this gentleman's original question, and might be for Mr. McFadden to answer. I'm one that I have not answered your survey, as much as I would really like to do that, because I still feel a little bit insecure regarding some of the ambiguity with the rules. And I don't mean in disrespect to anyone. I have a child suffers a lot of anxiety, so I'm trying to cover his bases. One of the things is, we have the rules, I'm trying to follow it. However, we see inconsistency even as of a few weeks ago with social media. And that can be our friend, it can be our nemesis as well. But what we're noticing is posts of, you know, some sports where they are not wearing their mask in the building, and then others are doing everything correctly per protocol. So similar to his question, how is that truly going to be mandated, especially here at the high school level? Treating it like a dress code thing, what does that really mean? Will the parent be called, and the student allowed back into class until the mask is worn? Because we did have a circumstance where a coach actually let a group of athletes go into the athletics. They were now walking into the building, and they were actually said, okay, guys, you can take this off, your masks off, because you're in the weight room. However, unfairly, then the other teams are coming in, and you see them either there that day or the next day, they're following protocol. So the inconsistency kind of doesn't give me the confidence to sign on that dotted line and check that box and say, yeah, you're going back.
I appreciate that. So, Mr. McFadden, I'll try to take the first thought. I think I appreciate the thought process behind the dress code violation, because we want our students to work with us on this, we want our families to feel, again, realizing that there are differences of opinion about the research behind the mask, or, you know, or is it really what I want my child to be doing? But let me be very clear about this. Students who are above the age of 10, if they want to be in our schools, will wear a mask. And that is not only our position, but that is a position that was reinforced by the state commissioner, and again, it is the law. If a student chooses not to wear a mask, we will invite them for remote instruction. And if they're not wearing a mask during the course of the day, we will separate them because that is, again, it's not a, if you would like to, we would welcome you to consider. That is the rule in our school district. So now, what I can't say is, are you going to always be able, you know, will there be a case with 9,000 students across 10 campuses, or you will find and see a student not wearing a mask, or a T-, you know, I think we're all learning. I, you know, as we meet, my team, you know, getting used to that mask has just been, you know, but then it becomes a habit. So as we welcomed our students back to school, as we welcomed our campus teachers, it was interesting when our teachers came back, they were pretty good about wearing the masks, but not so good about the social distancing. Now, when you walk into our schools and you see a faculty meeting, they're wearing their masks, they're wearing their shields, they're social distancing. So we're just, it's a habit that we are learning. So again, will we be perfect? No. Will we get better? Absolutely.
I just want to apologize if you misunderstood. We will not allow them in school, and if they are not wearing a mask, I simply meant if it slipped off, the kid forgot he had it on his chin, we're going to remind them to put their mask on. But if they don't, if they refuse to wear a mask, we're not allowed to have them in class, and so they would be, it would be an insubordination, and we would ask the parent to come and pick them up. I know in certain instances in athletics, while they're actively engaged in the activity, they don't have to wear their mask, but they are supposed to be wearing their mask at all other times. And any time that they're not locker room or otherwise would be a violation of that, and we would address that as such if we find that occurring.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have one comment before my question. I think that it's a great thing that you started with remote learning. I think if we had started right away and then had to shut down October 1st, it would have been March all over again, which March was kind of a mess, and it's nobody's fault because it was unprecedented. But I think it's great that there's a precedent set now, the kids know what to expect. If my junior high son has to come home for two weeks, he knows exactly what his days are going to look like. And I also thank you for opening kindergarten, because that's been wonderful. So, my comments. Secondly, with athletics, was really going to be my question, and when you said the director of athletics was here, I was totally excited. One is about the mask, when they're in activity, when they're not in activity, when they've been playing outside and it's 100 degrees, and then they stop the activity, they have to put a mask on, it's 100 degrees, or do they not? Like, what constitutes inactivity? And are we going to have football?
This is Texas, man. I don't want to be the guy that's always going to have football. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hurd, our athletic director, to come up and answer some of those questions.
All right, thank you all for coming, and to your question, yes, ma'am, as of August 25th, yes, ma'am, we are going to have football, and we're planning on it. And we ask football at all levels. With the mask, yes, ma'am, if they're not actively practicing, we're going to ask them to put a mask on. Now, I kind of think where we're moving forward, especially with the lower groups and at high school, you, I'm trying to see, somebody's got a gator on.
Gators, yeah.
Anyway, a gator is what most people are going to. You come in, you run your play, and you sit at the outfield, put your gator up, is what we're doing. If you enter the building, locker room, got to have your mask on. Yes, ma'am, it's going to be hot, that's one of the things that the campus coordinators, myself, have been working on as far as hydration of our athletes, how we're going to deliver that water. It's going to be different than it has been in the past. We're going to ask, right now, we're talking about them bringing out bottles, we're able to fill it, no contact, and then, you know, they're going to have to keep it that way. Of course, we're also allowing for, you know, if somebody forgets their bottle, that we're still going to be able to hydrate them. So we're going through all those things right now as far as keeping, you know, number one, like Dr. Morrison said, safety's number one. And of course, that's gators, distancing when we can, hydration, and moving forward that way.
So inside the weight room, you want them to wear a gator? Because that's in the building, but they're doing activity.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Right, now, if I'm playing basketball, and I'm playing three-on-three, no, ma'am, I don't have to wear my mask, but if I'm sitting on the sideline, yes, ma'am, I do.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, thank you again first, thank you for the level of readiness that you all have been doing in preparation thereafter opening the schools. In the same vein of athletics and sports, and of course, by reviewing taxes for football, right? Sports events, I believe it's been conveyed, like the occupancy would be 50%. Any details on how that would be pursued?
Yes, we have some details, so I'm going to ask Clint to come back. We actually will be reviewing some of those tomorrow. And this is the portion that is not going to make some folks happy, but we're always going to be truthful, and this is kind of some of our most current thinking.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Where'd you go? Okay, there we are. Yes, there are UIL guidelines, University of Statute Lane, which governs high school athletics. We're mandated to be at 50% or below. We're also mandated to keep social distance at six feet, and through the governor's order and the UIL, you are required to wear a mask to enter an athletic, UIL athletic event. Those are mandatory. So what we're doing right now is we're going through each one of our venues, we're measuring, and we're coming up with a plan of how we're going to seat you, how we're going to sell you those tickets, and yes, we are going to have significant lower crowds. You know, let's take football for instance. I got to say two sections, I got to say one section for the band, because if you're a woodwind, you got to be 10 feet away from everybody. And then if we have the drill team, well, that's going to basically take up two sections. Then you talk about you have to be every other row six feet apart. Well, as you can tell, if you went to graduation, you'll find out that the number of people that can get into that game is going to be a lot less. And then you take that and you put it in a gym, well, you're going to condense that gym even more. What I did want to do, and I talked to Dr. Morrison about this this week, is I didn't want to come out with a plan, walk it back, come out with another one, walk it back. So what we're going to do is probably next week, we're going to kind of give this first part of how we're going to move forward, and then after Labor Day, we'll put forth our plan of how you can buy tickets, what the stadium's going to look like. But the thing you need to know is, before you go to any athletic venue, whether it's a seventh grade, B-team football game, or a varsity football game, you're going to be screened, you're going to have to wear a mask, and you're going to be asked to sit where you're socially distanced. you're social distance apart. I, I hope that answered your question. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, I've got an athletic question.
So I'm going to make this deal, because I know a lot of you probably have to hit the grocery store, and you got to get that bread and milk, appreciate that. And so I'm going to invite you to have our last question, but here's my deal to you. If we have not answered your question, if there's something that you still need that was very important for you to make the time to come here tonight, which we really appreciate, we're going to stick around. So after this last question with Mr. Hurd, we will reintroduce the different areas of responsibility, we're social distance, but then hopefully you can get to who you need to and get the information that you need. Mr. Hurd just gave a wonderful answer, but remember my three words, what are they? Subject to change. So, and we'll keep you updated as they go.
Okay, real quick. So we have two varsity athletes for Lake Creek, and I'm just very curious to know that if they're required to wear masks, if they're not actively engaged in the activity, whatever they're doing at the time, the practice or whatever, is there going to be somebody specifically there monitoring the kids to make sure they're not overheating, something's going wrong, they're not getting enough oxygen? My oldest son, he suffers from a lot of allergies, takes medicine for that. Also, he gets severe migraines, and so whenever he covers his face, it really intensifies all of that. But his love is baseball, he's a senior this year. So, you know, I'm just curious for his safety, we're talking about everybody else's safety from getting the virus, or, you know, just wondering if someone's going to be available to monitor these kids, you know, when they're putting the masks back on in those situations.
Well, yes, ma'am, I can understand playing baseball will give you a migraine. But, yeah, that's true, thank you, Dr. Morrison. Yes, yes it will, and if you were the principal when I was coaching, it gave you a bigger migraine. Yes, ma'am, we're going to have trainers on site, and, and.
Student trainers?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We're going to have, we're going to have student trainers, and then whenever we have practice, or we play a game, we have a trainer on site. So they're going to be there. And one of the things that, again, the coordinators meeting we have, we're again talking to our coaches about, you, you can't think pre-COVID. You, you can't do that in athletics, whether you're in the NFL, or if you're in select basketball, you can't think pre-COVID. You have to design your practices with COVID in mind, close contact, hydration, wearing the mask, how does that affect them? I mean, you have to be on top of your game. So that's one of the things that the coordinators are going back to the coaches and talking to them about, you know, when you design your practice, if it's an offseason workout, if it's an in-season workout, whatever, you have to take this into account. And, and that's what I think, and I've, you know, this is a great staff up here, I got, we got a great athletic staff, we got a great training staff. And they're going to put your young son or daughter in the best position that they could be. Now, it's athletics, people get hurt, things happen, but I can tell you that our intent is always the safety of our student athletes. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, and just real quick, to piggyback that, with athletics and also in the school in general, if the child kind of distanced himself, say, for example, we separate ourselves, we don't want to get amongst everybody, because I have, you know, problems breathing as well. So if, is it allowed that the student, if he's on the field and he needs, you know, to breathe fresh air, that he can remove himself from the rest of the group?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and is that also allowed, say, in the library, cafeteria?
I, I cannot speak for the activity, I'm going to turn that over.
Sure.
So, as everything in these questions, sometimes they're nuanced, okay? If a student is served in special education, there might be some medical issues where we have to accommodate with issues with mask shielding. If a student has other medical issues and does not have, is not serving special education, they may be served by a 504. If there are circumstances that you let your campus principal know, school nurse know, if we can try to accommodate, but remember, we're trying to keep your child safe and other children safe, so if we have to do some distancing, we'll work with you. I have a saying, I try to be proactive rather than reactive. So if you tell us upfront, then we can work together on a plan of action. If you tell us after the fact, and then you're upset because we didn't deal with, then, then we're apologized, and we're striving to do better. But if you tell us upfront, we'll work with you to try to serve the needs of your child and other children around them.
Okay, is that just a simple email to the nurse? Because normally we bring medicine for.
I would, I would send it to the nurse and principal, that way we're double covering.
Got it, thank you.
So again, I want to, I want to give you the opportunity to still ask questions, but respect people's time. You know, I have sayings, and sometimes I just like the saying, and then, you know, something happens, and I'm like, I understand now why I love that saying so much. And one of my favorite sayings is that ships are safest in the harbor, but that's not what ships are made for. And it really hit me visiting our campuses with no kids. And, and school is just not, no matter how much remote learning continues to get better and better, and it is. Schools were built to be a place of academic learning, love, and, and, and meeting the social, emotional needs of children. And so it was so exciting last week to welcome back our pre-K, kindergarten, special education students who are on alternative curriculum, and some of our students who do not have connectivity or devices. And we can't wait for sixth and ninth graders to return next week, and then we are incredibly excited to welcome all of our students whose families choose to avail themselves of our traditional in-person learning. But it comes with a huge responsibility, and we wear that every day. Our principals and our teachers think about that every day. And, and so one of the other sayings I say a lot, and this team probably roll their eyes because I say it, but I mean it, is that as leaders, we don't get to choose the challenges we face, we just get to choose how we face them. And, and we're making some mistakes. I wish I could tell you we were not going to, but we will. We're getting better. I wish we could be perfect on day one, but we're not going to try to be perfect, we're going to try to be excellent. We will be more excellent, we will be more proud of how we're trying to serve your children academically and safely as we collaborate with you. So thank you for making the time to be here this evening. Reminder, and I'll ask them to raise their hand, if you have a question around special education, you have a question about elementary instruction, operations, and our safety protocols, safety protocols and bus transportation, communications and human resources, finance, no, school finance, not your personal finances, but, you know, maybe I'm speaking out of term. Our benefits for employees. Did you raise your hand?
Sorry.
Okay. Wait, 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 okay. Athletics, nurses, child nutrition, secondary instruction, and if there's anything I left out, instructional technology, but that's probably Amy, and of course, I'll be here too. We're practicing a little bit of social distancing, thank you for that, thank you for being here, thank you for giving us the honor and privilege of serving your children.